Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August fourteenth. August fourteenth, I wish it was still August fourteenth. I think we all wish it were still August. The September fourteenth hearing. A couple of things on general business. I have a motion on the minutes from the previous meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by John, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John, also, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Just for some updated information for board members, Kelly has passed around the updated and amended zoning bylaws, the latest and greatest edits and revisions have been done. So if you would, if you could, please get those into your books for future reference and review. With that, since it's past 7:05, I'll try and move this thing along. The first application is on Joseph Poirot, hopefully I'm spelling that correctly or pronouncing correctly. If he's in the room, would you please come up to the microphone? Have a seat and I'll go through the hearing. This is on an application for a variance from provisions of section 2.4 and/or 2.5 of the zoning bylaw in relation to a parcel of land containing 29,000 plus or minus square feet of land on the southerly side of East Main Street, known and numbered as 453 East Main Street. The variance relief is sought to permit the raising of an existing single-family wood frame house on the premises and a replacement thereof with a single-family split entry house as shown on the plan submitted with this application. I believe our notice had the wrong street address. And I believe that the application is actually, what is this here, 435? What do you have for a street address?
453.
453?
East Main, yep.
Yeah, it was just posted wrong. The public notice went out properly. Okay. Thank you. With that, we have the application concerning the property. And a couple of questions that the applicant had answered, you know, what circumstances exist concerning the soil condition, shape, and topography of the premises? The applicant states that the lot meets all other requirements for a conformed lot aside from the minimum square footage. Basically, the indication also was asked if the variance was not granted, what hardship, what clause? The applicant indicates that the current, the current, can't make out the word, the current parties?
Current owners.
The current owners who are partially disabled or fully disabled would have a worthless piece of property, neighborhood, and town, and town supply and light, I guess. I can't really read this at all. The applicant states it would be a property improvement that would make it much more conducive to the neighborhood, it appears. This was sent off to the zoning board hearing on 8/7. The planning board reviewed the petition above, it is scheduled, and recommends the following favorable, see town plan a letter. Paraphrasing, the applicant requests a variance to construct a detached, single-family dwelling on the subject property. The lot is non-conforming to area frontage with the RC zone. The existing dwelling mobile home is to be razed. Given the circumstances, the appropriate relief is a special permit, not a variance. Further, the house, the proposed house will conform to all other applicable zonings. Therefore, they had recommended a favorable report sent off to this board. Everyone in the audience, the members of the zoning board, after the applicant indicates what he's trying to do, will ask questions. And then, from that point, we will turn it over to anyone in the public that would like to be heard. All questions I ask are to be directed through the chairman to keep things moving as quick as properly and probably more efficiently. So with that, please tell us what you're trying to do.
Yes.
Do you have a plan that you can post up on the?
No, other than what we submitted. Other than what we submitted, that would be it.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
So, my name is Joseph Poirot, and I'm trying to just build that single family. It's a split-level home. And I think that the area sorely needs it. I've been in here about half a dozen times, and every person that's, I've talked to, said that it could probably use a facelift, and I think a nice new home there would look great.
Okay. John, do you have, you want to, John, I'll start with you?
No, no question.
Charlie?
No.
Okay. John?
No, no question.
And Bobby?
No.
Okay. I want to, I have a couple of comments to make. This property is clearly, probably one of the hottest eyesores in the town of Milford. There is a trailer in that, that property and has been there at disrepair for years. That trailer, I believe, was maybe a one-bedroom home. It seemed like it's been a construction yard for years with debris, block. I believe there's still concrete block walls down there. Do you plan on removing those?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything will be removed there.
You know, as far as the house is concerned, I'm more comfortable replacing something of similar size that were there, although the trailer is kind of small. I mean, I'd certainly be in favor of a, of a two-bedroom home being built. So that was my comment. With that, anybody in the audience want to be heard? Yes, sir? Please stand up, give me your name.
My name is Al Donara, I live at One Woods from Pine, I bought the rear of the property.
Okay.
I'm all for it, just to be heard on that.
Okay.
My question is, I got a potable well 15 feet off of that property, the rear of that. So where does the leach and field end on what's going to be installed?
The leach and field is in the backyard. You have a drinking well in your yard?
Yeah, it was told to the people who walked the property, I believe maybe some engineers or some other people, and have you, have you walked the property?
I've never been out there myself, no.
Have you walked the property?
Yes.
There's signs on the fence that say it. It was instructed to me by Mr. Madsen-Kelly to put those signs up when I pulled the permit, so that if something was being built there, that they would be aware of.
That you have a well there?
A potable well.
Is that a?
It's permitted with the town.
Is that, is that a drinking well, or is that irrigation well, or could be both, correct?
It's, it's.
It can be both.
It's permitted as a drinking well as right now.
Okay.
It's not in the home yet.
Okay.
It will be.
Okay, so they have guidelines they need to follow concerning, concerning that, because otherwise you're going to be pretty fairly impacted.
We have to be aware, as far as Title V laws.
Right, so we will make sure we are. Sounds good.
Okay. Anyone else would like to be heard?
I do have a comment. With the drinking water well there, how many bedroom home are you trying to build there?
Three.
I think that's too much.
Yeah. I have to say the same, with the well being that close. And, yeah, I would have a problem with a three-bedroom home with the size of Leachfield would be, approximately to his drinking water.
Well, the system, regardless of how many bedrooms are in the home, the system will be sized according to Title V and the, you know, local Board of Health rules and regulations, which we have. And as far as a setback from the well, it's got to conform to those regulations, regardless if it's a six-bedroom or two-bedroom.
So you already have a septic design for the house?
Yeah, I already have it in and approved.
Do you have that?
Do you have a copy of that?
No, it's in the Board of Health. We haven't got back from the Board of Health yet.
All right, so I think some of the comments you've heard from the, from the board members, since this is a special permit, looks like the board, one or two of the board members would like to see a two-bedroom home. I'm sure that won't be an issue.
It's up to you.
No, I would like to have a three-bedroom there, I don't think it'd be.
Okay, so if you're denied, then if you're not going to cooperate with the two-bedroom home, then if we deny it, then you, you won't be able to do anything on the property.
Come on, you'll have to work.
The aspect of, of moving this thing along in the benefit of the community also impacts other people in the school system down the road. I'm more comfortable with having a small trailer that was a one-bedroom home taken down and replaced with a two-bedroom home, similar to all the homes that were just built down the street from that.
Even though, can we just, am I allowed to mention this?
It doesn't matter, it's your here for a special permit.
Okay.
Lots of creative pride to zoning, so.
So what else, does anybody else want to be heard on that matter? Okay. Anybody else, Jeff?
So what is your feeling? Are you willing to go to a two-bedroom home?
I would rather, I'm gonna, I would like to be able to appeal it and go to a three-bedroom. I don't think the two-bedroom is going to be, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, with that, you have your last word, and before we take an under advisement?
No, this is my first time in a situation like this, so I'm not really too sure what I.
Yeah, see, in a two-bedroom, Title V would have to do a deed restriction also, which encumbrance the home and the possible buyers down the line.
There was a trailer on there, remember that?
Yes, it was there back in seventy.
Right, right.
And we don't know how many bedrooms are in the trailer. We can't say for sure.
And it was also an addition built onto the trailer, I don't know if you guys all saw that beforehand, that was actually bigger than the trailer itself.
Yeah, I don't even know if there was a permit pulled for that.
I, I. No, I don't know any of that stuff myself. But I was just hoping that, I figured, most of the houses on the street seem to be at least three-bedroom, but maybe I'm wrong about that.
Okay. Two-bedroom homes today are in the $400,000 category, so it's, you know, well, the woods alone are in the fives. So I, I think the impact, from a sale standpoint, is not going to affect any type of, and results for you, I think it would be very well done and fit within the neighborhood. That's just my opinion, but I'll close the hearing if you'd like me to.
It's just, the only, the last thing I'll say is, it's just a lot, a lot more saleable at three than it is two for someone like me.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll close the hearing. Board members, what's the pleasure? You have a motion? A motion to, do you want to take a motion for a two-bedroom home? Plus, the concrete stanchion walls have to, have to be removed from the property, because it looks like it's a commercial site right now?
I'll make that motion.
So we have a motion by Charlie that will, will approve it as submitted, providing it's a two-bedroom, and that the giant stone walls of concrete road construction stanchions are removed prior to occupancy, that way there would provide him enough time to get him out there.
I second that.
John, a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's unanimous. Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, that being 7:20, this is going to be on the application of Sharon Goldstein and Regina Cladaleep. I hope I did not wreck that, the pronunciation of that name, I'm sorry, but come on up, have a seat. Welcome. Okay, anybody have conflicts on this one? If not, I've got the full-time members, of course, and then I've got Charlie and John on this hearing. Do you get logged in okay? Okay, this is, I'll actually read this, because it may be a little complicated. This is on the, for variance in the provisions of section 2.4 and 2.5 of the zoning bylaws in relation to a parcel of land containing 16,000 plus or minus square feet, more or less, located on the northerly side of Florence Street, known and numbered as 7 Florence Street. Alternatively, the applicant's appealed under irrelevant provisions of the zoning bylaw from a decision of the building commissioner dated July 31st, denying the petition's right to sep, to separate said lot into two lots available for single-family construction. The extent of the variance relief is considered to be needed for the subject parcel. The relief sought would authorize the division of the existing parcel into two lots, one containing an existing dwelling, and the second lot to be available for single-family construction I have an application here, which is an appeal of the decision from the building inspector. Let me just read this briefly. Is your counsel here tonight?
Yes, I am.
Your name, sir?
Daniel Sejenberg from Rent the Massachusetts.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, you came north to Milford. Welcome a lot.
All the way up here, I know, I had an old Norfolk guy ask, wanted to come with me, would refuse, whatever. I don't know what that meant.
Okay, the, the building commissioner issued a decision on this, so it's basically indicating they've appealed that decision. This is being stated as lots four and five, and lots two and three are not to have been under common ownership for zoning purposes, that there has been no merger. We sought, we sought a determination that lots four and five with the single-family dwelling retain their grandfather protection as prior conforming lot and structure, and lots four and five may be sold and conveyed separately from two to three lots, from lots two and three. A decision determining that lots four and five and lots two and three are not, and have not been under common ownership for zoning purposes, and there has been no merger, lots four and five with the single-family resident dwelling retain their grandfather protection as a prior non-conforming structure, and that lots four and five may be sold separately from lots two and three. There's a very lengthy letter here from the building commissioner, and it's, it's quite lengthy. If the board members would like me to read that, you have a copy of it. I am sure that Mr. Sejenberg would fill us in on what that indicates. Also in the folder, there is showing a plot plan, a house on one section, and another lot on the other. There are no measurements, there are no frontage measurements, and there's no subdividing of any lines, just so that the board members are up to date, that this is not an engineered plan. It's an old plan that shows the entire lot, it looks like. Chain of title is in here, that I'm sure the attorney will have to go over with. So with that, I've got the deed, copies of the deeds in here. This is the first time I've seen this. And apparently, the building commissioner went through all of this and felt that he could not, he could not vote in favor of the right to separate. So I am assuming you are here for a variance to separate now?
No, actually, we, we're alternative. I have had discussions with the building commissioner, as well as town council, while in advance of filing these, who suggested I do it alternatively. I do think the, where we should approach this is really the determination, it's in my position that, that the current property with the house on it is, it remains based on, retains its grandfather protection and is still a viable separate lot. That's basically 7 Florence Street, lots four and five. It's a rather confusing pass, which I'll happy to share with the board and explain it, but that's really what I'd ask for. That's the major reason we're here. Obviously, if, for any, whatever reason this board wanted to give us relief and didn't think that was appropriate, then we would discuss the variance issue. But I don't think you need to address it as an variance.
Yeah, so basically, we would, we would be appealing the building inspector's decision.
Yeah, and I just like, just like, you know, basically, the building inspector, I mean, the building inspector frankly did my clients a favor. If he made a determination that it was, remains buildable, it wouldn't give them any, the relief they would need to sell the house. Basically, what my, my clients are here are looking for some help. Their mother, their late mother frankly created a bit of a procedural mess we're trying to resolve. They tried to, neither one of them live on the property, one of my, one of my clients lives there occasionally. The property was on the market for sale, they tried to sell the house. This issue came out, whether or not it was the lot four and five, 7 Florence Street could be sold separately. It's my position that, I feel quite strongly on this, that it retains the grandfather protection. So I think if I explain it, the procedural history, I think you'll have a much better understanding why that's the case.
Okay, and I'm just going to make a comment to that, because you, you do have a petition for the variance here, so I want to go through this. Let me read that, and then I think we'll encompass it all, and maybe have a better understanding of it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So the, the aspect basically indicates.
Do you have a plan?
There is a.
There is no plan.
There is a plan as for the variance?
No, just a plan of.
Yeah, there's a plan in your, in your submittals, there should be.
That's all it is. There's no engineered plan showing subdividing of the lot, frontage width, which is the problem, and is going to be a problem tonight?
Yes, you're right, except for the fact that it actually is an engineered plan that was utilized and recorded at the registry of deeds. That's, that's what we, that's what created the problem.
Yeah, but it, but that's dated how old?
That was done in 2009?
Eight, 2009.
Right, but when you go now to try and separate that, you have to show frontage, width, lot sizes, in order to properly obtain the variance.
On the variance issue, you're right, you would have to know exactly what the dimensional deficiencies are in order to address the variance. I agree. But I don't think you have to address the issue, but.
Well, let me go through the application, we'll kind of talk through it and see if we can make something move forward.
There's a zoning map.
Yeah. You had to ask, go to my left arm, what I can't lift.
You want a hug?
No, I don't want a hug. Oh my God. Okay, I'll read this while he's looking at, what he needs to look at on this side. Basically, concerning the question, what circumstances relate to the, the soil condition, shape, and topography of the premises, the applicant says that the property has unique circumstances based on a conveyance of the prior non-conforming property of lots four and five with the home located on it, by deed, and with adjoining vacant lots two and three, which have separate ownership. If the variance was not granted, what hardship would be created, and the applicant stipulates that the applicants are seeking to sell the single-family house located on lots four and five. In absent this variance, they will be unable to sell the property. Concerning the question, why you feel the granting of the variance will not cause the detrimental aspects of the public good, the applicant indicates that at least since 1965, date of the master zoning changed the property with a single-family home, as consisted of lots four and five, so the variance will not have any impact on the public good. This did, by the way, go in front of the planning board. The, the planning board reviewed this on September 5th, and indicated unfavorable no hardship, building commissioner letter of appeal and the decision. The Larry Duncan basically had taken a look at this and said, the applicant, the applicant currently appealing a decision of the building commissioner, the property consists of 16,000 square foot lot in an RB zone, which was comprised of smaller parcels that were previously, previously merged by law. As the appeal to building commissioner's letter details, has this decision in a complex case to consider the formal parcels merged by law. As to the variance request, there are no circumstances related to the size, shape, and the topography of the property, or otherwise that would constitute a hardship. Therefore, they had recommended an unfavorable report be sent off to this board. So with that, I kind of get, I kind of, because we've seen this before, I do get the aspects of, the challenges of prior, prior to the 65 zoning. In the 65 zoning, we had all these small little lots, and, and two or three or four lots got put together, and there was one lot. And then, of course, 65, 66, the zoning changed and everything. At that point, lots became bigger, family members got, did have hardship, because something that they may have saved for future generations ended up being merged by whatever reason, and therefore yields that property unbuildable, unsaleable, even if a family member wanted to build on it without coming to this board for a variance. So saying that and making that comment, it's nice to see you, Jeff, here, I haven't seen you in a while. The, the challenge that I think the board has tonight is, we get your issue concerning the grandfathered clause, but not having, along with the variance application, having a full engineered plan showing the grandfathered lot separation by dimension, so that you could legally try to do something, I think becomes the challenge of this board tonight, unless the board member may, may have a different opinion, and maybe you can help me.
I'd be happy to do it, yeah, I mean.
Correct that situation.
I'm happy to do that. I mean, first of all, it's, it's not like the, and these lots go back, I think, I think the, the initial plan showing a number of these various small lots was, it's in the title, but it goes back into the early 1900s, I believe.
Correct.
And so, basically what occurred here is that my client's mother, who is, is that her name somewhere?
Norma Plant.
Thank you, I knew it was that.
Yep.
Norma Plant, she acquired lots four and five, which is 7 Florence Street. This is back in 1960. This is before any zoning change. There's a deed for lots four and five, 7 Florence Street. There is a plan referencing that deed, it's all there. So you do have recorded plans relative to four, lots four and five. In 1960, Florence Plant built a house on lots four and five. And since 1960, there's been a house on lots four and five. People have resided in the house. 65, there was zoning change, four and five combined have about 8,000 square feet, and that's shown by title record. It's on a plan.
How many feet of frontage?
I do not know what the frontage is. I probably could, I do have the plan, I'd have to magnify the plan in order to, I don't, what is the current frontage in the zone?
The old, the old was like eighty. Forty and forty is eighty, yeah.
Yeah, looks like it may be forty per lot.
What's that say?
Eighty.
Is that 180 or 160? Can't see anything like that. That does?
But that's the assesses map, this year, what's this?
I had a magnif, there is a plan, it's in your submittals, the old plan, and it does have dimensions, which is so small, I'd, if I had a magnifying glass, or if you had a magnifying.
Yeah, we, we have the old plan, there were, yeah.
So, in any event, so this was, so 1960, they build a house, it complied with, 65 was the zoning change, it obviously complied, 65, it became a non-conforming lot, has protection under 48, section six, is grandfathered in, nothing else changed with this house or this lot, except the fact that it relates to lots two and three, the adjoining parcels. And with your, with the submittals here, I have a letter from an attorney, gives the fairly long, checkered story of lots two and three. Two and three, there's nothing built on two and three, my clients have no desire to build on two and three, not asking this board to make a determination on lot two and three, we're only asking this board to allow my clients to sell the house that's been on lots four and five since 1960. Why are we here then, how did this all happen? What happened was, and we wouldn't be here, except for the fact that Mrs. Plant decided that she wanted to do some estate planning. And she, let me go back a little bit, about lots two and three. There's a long story on lots two and three. Once again, the whole chain of title on two and three is in your submittals, it explains the situation, but at some point in time, Mrs. Plant buy, inherited a very small percentage of lot two and three. It's probably, I have the percentage, it's probably maybe, I'd guess, 25 percent. So she has a 25 percent interest in lot two and three.
Can you come up here for a minute?
Yeah, absolutely, happy.
Because I'm confused, or whatever, you're talking about lot four and five, and now you're talking about two and three, so.
Yeah.
Here, this is the lot right here, correct?
Um, can't see it, I could give up an assesses map, so I don't know.
This is what you submitted with the package.
I don't know.
And then, this is the old, this is the old plan.
Right, that's the, that's the plan that we.
This is the plan.
Okay. Here's a better one.
That was created. Well, that helps. You've been holding out on us.
I'd like to thank all my assistants.
How come you don't have this?
No, I agree, I appreciate it.
All right, so.
So you turn, turn it like that, so here's Florence Street, so there's one, two, three, there's four lots, so.
So four and five, the house is on four and five.
Look over your shoulder.
Who owns lots two and three?
That's what I was about to tell you. A lot, no, by the way, there's probably 100 people who own lots two and three. That's why they don't have control, that's why they can't, that's why merger doesn't come into play here. If my clients owned lot two and three, we wouldn't be here. We accept the fact, common ownership, it's merging, right? Merge is control. If you can do something about it, right? Zoning says you gotta basically make the non-conformity less perform, right? They can't do anything with lot two and three, they have no, they have a very small interest in lot two and three, which they inherited from their mother. But they, all the other people, it goes back, if you look at the chain of title, that's, once again, there's a letter from, I think, an attorney there, explains the situation. It went through about, it started out with three relatives, they died, another died, you're talking so many generations, we can't find them all. We could, it would be Herculean for us to find all these people and try to have them, and then...
Couldn't you send notice in 1990?
They're gonna have, they're gonna have to go, they're gonna have to do, they're gonna have to go...
So, are you, are you here just to sell the house that's on lot four and five?
That's all we want to do.
So you're not looking to subdivide into another lot?
We're not trying to do anything with two and three, we're not looking for permission to do anything in two and three. Alls we're looking to do is to sell the house that's been there since 1960, that's four and five.
But if you understand that if you're not looking to do anything on the other two, you still don't have anything on, if you come back, if you come back, you may get denied to put a house up on two and three.
We don't want to do anything with, I don't want two and three.
I guess you're quick.
Absolutely, please.
I just want to sell our house.
I got you.
So they own a house on four and five?
Yes.
Correct, bingo. They want to sell that house?
That's all they want to do.
Now, we're bringing in two and three because they have a minority interest in that, but there are other people. Now, they pay taxes on four and five?
They do.
You have, that's it, it's a separate lot that...
No.
No, they merged them.
Two, three, four, and five is one lot.
They merged them, they merged them.
2008, it was merged.
And that's what happened, this is what I was trying to get to, so I'm trying to answer your question. Basically, their mother, because for estate planning purpose, decided that she, she had a small interest in two and three. She decided, so it wouldn't have to go through probate, that she would convey it, kept the life estate for herself, actually her and her husband, both now deceased, and they have the remainder. So when the mother and father died, they acquired the house on four and five, and whatever interest the mother had in lot two and three. That's what happened. They made it more complicated, because mother wanted to get an abatement, and she couldn't get an abatement on any interest she had on two and three. I'm not saying any of this makes sense, by the way.
Yeah, I agree.
If someone talked to me, it never would have happened, but I'm, that's, I just, make the best of what I have. What they did is, they had Garia Hallen prepare that plan that I submitted here, that basically brought the property together. Even the, yeah, go ahead.
All right, so, what you're saying is, there's four and five and two and three, and they're all connected?
No.
They're not, okay, good.
They're not connected.
All right, so four and five is their property that they pay taxes on?
Right.
Bingo.
And they just want to sell.
All right, two and three, who owns that?
Like I said, probably 100 people.
All right, and they pay taxes on that?
There are people paying taxes, I'm not so sure who's paying.
My parents paid the taxes all those years, even though other people owned it, owned the lot. And in 2008, my mother wanted to have one tax bill, so she went to a lawyer, and she had everything done, and he approved of it, and they got one tax bill, but they should have never gotten one tax bill, because they weren't the sole owners of that land. Everyone owned that land, and that was done kind of illegally.
But nonetheless, they paid the taxes, yes.
The problem is, what connects right now legally, two and three to four and five?
The fact that there was a plan drawn, that obviously you do a plan, you record it at the registry of deeds, the town becomes aware of it, they treat it as one for tax purposes, and a tax bill goes out for all those four lots.
Okay. So it is one lot now?
Not for zoning.
Not legally.
For purposes of the assessor's office, and a tax bill? I do believe one tax bill goes out.
One tax bill, but not legally.
For zoning, it is not...
So to sell, you have to cut this lot off?
No. We, alls we need is a, yes, yes and no, I shouldn't say no. Not exactly.
You have to give her two and three.
We just need to have this board make a determination that two, that lots four and five retain based on the same grandfather protection, and that's all we need. And then we can sell the property, that's all we need. And by the way, that's why the building inspector, if the building inspector, I did talk to the building inspector about this, and he, if he made a determination that this thing was grandfathered in, we couldn't do anything with it, because it's not binding on anybody on the title. You need a zoning board of appeals report to tell us that this is grandfathered protection. And by the way, I apologize, I don't like making such a complicated thing, but it really, when you base it down, get it down, it's not that, it's pretty simple when you think about it.
Okay, so say the house sells, and you convey it, what do you convey?
Four and five.
It's four and five.
Four and five, under the old plan, under the, under the prior 65 plan.
Exactly.
The new one is not getting...
Regardless of that, if a piece of the house, a piece of the house, the porch could be on the other lot, when the engineering is done.
But we know it's not, but...
You're sure?
Yes.
I've seen stranger things happen.
I know, just that the house has been there since 1960, and so they know where the house is. Matter of fact, that plan that, that submitted the, the recent Garia Hallen, it actually shows it's located on, it's been four and five, now four and five.
Just one final question.
Absolutely.
All right, so, you know, you sell four and five, what happens to two and three at that point?
It just stays in, it stays in title limbo, is what it's gonna do.
Right, yeah, because you're gonna, you're gonna have to go through a whole bunch of stuff, to even to get the proper ownership of whoever owns it.
Absolutely. If we could have done that, if we could have found all these heirs, we wouldn't have to come here, we just can't do it.
All right, so it's just gonna stay there, and nobody has a distinct interest because they have total ownership of that?
Nobody without total ownership, that's, but there'll be, there'll be numerous people who have an ownership, whether, so yes.
Well, who pays the taxes then?
Well, it depends, I assume what will happen is, once you get a determination of this nature, then the assessors will go back to what they did for 60 years, and they'll start assessing two and three separately again, and my clients will make a decision whether they pay the taxes or not. If they don't pay the taxes, the town will get two and three for a tax ticket. It has no value, it doesn't add anything to this property, it just abates, there's nothing there, there's no plans to utilize it.
Yeah, you can't even transfer it.
And we can't transfer, we can't do anything. And that's why, that's why there's no merger. Merge, I was gonna, I was gonna give you a whole, a whole recitation on, in case law, it merges all of, you probably know what you're gonna transfer. Merge is based in toxic control. It's, it, the whole idea of merger is the fact, it makes sense, you have a non-conforming lot, right? And nobody wants non-conforming lots, if you can avoid it. So if someone foolishly enough conveys it, and they have an adjoining lot, you want the lots to be as conforming as possible to zone, that's, that's the goal. That's what merge, the doctrine of merge is all above. So that's the purpose of it, but it's the control idea. The idea is that you can control the lot, the example you people see a lot of times is somebody would own a lot individually, the other lot, this is case law, the other lot's owned by trust, and what they've determined is, that's really, you know, basically, I don't care what ownership you have, you obtain ownership effectively or control of 100% of both of those two lots.
Right.
That's control, that's merger.
That's merger.
That puts them together. There's no control here, there's, and I, personally, I've been informed by the board, I appreciate it, there's no case law that would in any way contradict what I'm saying. This is, this is not merger, it's a, you gotta peel the onion to have to figure, what looks like a really complicated situation becomes pretty simple when you really understand it.
So basically, you just want, tonight...
How'd you find this, somebody tried to sell it, and some lawyer?
Yes, they tried to sell it, and they did a title, and someone looked at it, and they did a plan, and said, "What the heck is this?"
What's going on?
Yeah, there's, you see the same, you see that plan that I submitted here, and, yeah, exactly, so they can't sell it.
And you couldn't convey it.
They can't convey.
So you're looking for a decision to overturn the building inspector's decision, to allow lots four and five to be released as grandfathered lots?
Where, I think, effectively, yes, we're looking for a determination by this board that in fact, four and five retain grandfather protection, that's all we're looking for.
Good, okay.
Anyone else have anything to say?
That's what I'm, will you give me time, I'm still talking? He wants to hug me, and then he probably wants to hit me.
I was, I was bothering him over the shoulder.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to be heard on this hearing?
How many square feet does two and three have? Does it, is it enough to even act?
No.
I mean...
Eight thousand.
I'm sorry.
Eight thousand.
That's a good amount.
No, you're not buying it.
No, no, no.
Say 15,000 square foot.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, it's a good chunk of land.
I'm gonna boost this on you later, we'll get to it.
We got a one, one-fifth interest if you want to buy it.
Anybody else want to be heard? Any other comments from board members?
No.
If not, what's the pleasure of the board? Why don't you, since you're being...
I make a motion to approve it.
How do you want it approved?
Like he asked.
Repeat it.
I wasn't listening.
It's always nice to have some comical people up here. All right, we, there's a motion on the table to approve the lots four and five under the grandfather clause, as determined, we have a second from John? That's, that good enough to you?
That'd be great, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. Good luck with the rest of it, and if you need anything else, come on back.
Thank you, appreciate it all.
All right, have a great night, thank you.
Thanks.
I don't think, you got, you know the 20-day appeal period, I don't think anybody's gonna appeal this decision.
That's good, yeah, and I know Attorney Moody's gonna look at this, but that's helpful.
Nice point, and I should.
All right, okay, thank you.
Press escape. Yeah, escape, right there.
Yeah, that was a first, huh?
Yeah, that was, that was, that was tough. Okay, moving right along. What do we have here? We have, this is 14 East Street? You're doing 14 East Street? Okay, we, let me see, on this here, we have three full-time members, we also have Charlie and John on this one. Okay, this is on the application. This is on the application. Angelo Soto, this is Southwest, nine, seven, nine, six, nine, Southwest Terrace, Gainesville, Florida, for variance relief from the positions of 2.4 and 2.5 of the zoning bylaw, in relation to a 16,500 square-foot more parcel land located on East Street, known to number as 14 East Street, which parcel is owned by the petitioner. The variance relief is sought to permit the division of the property into two lots, one lot to contain the existing residential dwelling and garage, and the second lot to consist of 8,520 square feet, plus or minus, for a single-family construction use. Concerning questions that have been asked, this is, this is in relation to the section 2.4 and 2.5 of the zoning regulations. Concerning the applicant's question, what circumstances exist relating to the soil condition, shape, and topography of the subject premises, which do not generally affect other, other land in the zoning district? The applicant states, "This is a unique-shaped lot with approximately 18,450 square feet. The existing dwelling located on the lot is not central to the lot, but instead on the southerly side of the lot, as shown on, as lot A on the plan. The minimum lot area in the district is 18, 8,000. Both new lots will have more than the required lot in the zone. Size of the lot and location of the dwelling are unique to this lot and does not generally affect the district. If the variance was not granted, what hardship would it create? The applicant states that without the requested leave, it would cause hardship by preventing the use of an additional 8,200 square-foot parcel of land for single-family purposes. The applicant states that the proposed use of the premises is harming with the neighborhood, and an addition of one single-family residence will not cause harm to the public." Good. This did go to, has this gone over to the planning board yet? I don't see a letter in here.
Yes.
Is there a letter in there?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes, there is.
Oh, here it is, it's on the bottom. Planning board reviewed this, recommend unfavorable. Town plan or letter indicates, "The applicant requests the variance to subdivide an existing 18,000 plus or minus square-foot lot to create, conforming lot to create another building lot. The existing building is a two-family dwelling, and as such, this property is considered conforming as to the use and area. The application ignores the special permit requirements for two-family dwelling lot sizes in the IRA zone. If granted, would create a zoning violation for the proposed new lot for the two-family dwelling. The applica, the application also ignores the frontage and width requirements of the proposed lots. Furthermore, there was no conditions relating to the shape and topography of the property that constitutes a hardship. Therefore, they recommend unfavorable report to the zoning board." With that, I will turn it over to you.
All right. I also have two larger plans, if you want...
Perfect, we'll take it. One here, we'll pass one down.
So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I am Suzette Ferreira, I represent Angelo Soto, who's originally from Milford, he actually recently moved to Gainesville, Florida with his wife and his two young children, and they moved to Florida for a work opportunity for his wife, she's a professor at the University of Florida. But Mr. Soto is a longtime Milford resident, all of his family is here in Milford, and he obviously hopes to be able to move back someday. He has owned the property at 14 East Street in Milford for, I believe, since 2011. This parcel is 18,450 square feet, which is an oversized lot for this district. He is proposing splitting this lot into two lots. One lot would retain the existing two-family, and the new lot would be available to build a new, single-family residential unit. And that would help him relocate back to Milford if he was to come back, because he would have the single-family home to be able to move into with his family, rather than trying to move into one of the residential units in the two-family. This lot is unique in the fact that it's a lot wider in the front than it is towards the back, it actually has almost 147 feet of frontage. If you look at that lot, you'll see that the existing house sits all the way over to one corner of that lot. And in fact, if that variance was granted, what also is unique to this parcel is that the existing single-family and garage would sit on East Street, but the entire new lot would be full-heartedly on Hayward Street. So that is unique to this specific lot. The proposed new lot would still have 8,500 square feet, and it would only have 56 feet of frontage. However, that sized lot is still consistent with the neighborhood, especially when you look at the two lots exactly next door. The other lot with the two-family on it would still have almost 10,000 square feet, and in addition to that, it would still have approximately nine, almost over 90 feet of frontage. The other interesting thing with this lot is, if you read the description in the deed, this, their deed actually describes the property in two separate parcels, which is not uncommon for this area, because having a lot of 18,450 square feet for this area is oversized. And considering that the existing house that was built in 1900 was way over to one side of the lot, it makes sense that at one point, this entire lot was probably two lots in this district. I'd also like to bring to your attention that in 2004, 2005, which is, I believe, when there was a change on the area size for a two-family, and that changed from 8,000 square feet to 12,000 square feet. And at that time, I will admit that I was actually part of a committee that was put together to look at the minimum lot sizes for two-family residences, because at that time, builders were building these oversized duplexes on these small lots. So at that time, as a result of that committee, I believe that the total square footage for two families was at that time increased. If you actually look at the single-family, I mean, the two-family that is on this oversized lot, I did print out this, this, um, you know, the residency card, and I don't know if anybody has been by there, but the two-family on that lot doesn't even look like a two-family, it looks like a single-family home with a detached garage next to it. So, this isn't really the type of thing that when the increase of the lot size was changed, it wasn't trying to prevent this type of home to be on an eight thousand square foot lot. It was trying to stop the oversized duplexes from being built on these small lots. This lot, this house looks like a single-family, the other house on an eighty-five hundred square foot portion would also be a single-family. And both lots would still be greater than eight thousand square feet for this district. We're saying that having one additional lot in this neighborhood is not going to be detrimental to the neighborhood, and it's not going to be a harm to the public. Now, obviously, I'm sure everybody is aware that Hayward Street is already busy with traffic and things of that nature, but at the same time, it's not busy with traffic of the residents of that area. That is a major cut-through for people that are trying to get to Route sixteen and to one oh nine, and they use Hayward Street to cut through. So that's where a majority of the traffic comes from, it doesn't come from the residents that live in that area. It's not overpopulated, it's not overly congested, and because of that, we're asking you to approve the request for the variances on those two lots.
Okay, thank you. Charlie, I'll start on your end.
I'm looking at Larry Duncan's letter, so I'd like to take a look at some of the things he said. First of all, I'm looking up, what is the required lot size in this, on the area, as we stand today?
Uh, for a single-family home, it's eight thousand square feet, and for a two-family, it's twelve thousand.
Okay, all right, so...
And duplex is sixteen thousand?
Sixteen thousand.
Now, now Larry's saying if it was granted, it would create a zoning violation for the proposed new lot for the two-family dwelling, meaning that the eighty, uh, eight thousand five hundred and twenty would be non-conforming, and that's...
The eight thousand five hundred and twenty would be for the new single-family lot, which would be conforming, which would leave nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-six square feet for the existing two-family home.
So what's non-conforming in the lot?
The frontage.
The frontage, correct. On the single-family would be the frontage, it would be, instead of being eighty feet, it's only fifty-six.
Now, he also says the application ignores the frontage and width requirements for the proposed lot. That doesn't seem to be the case right now. Was he not given a plan, or...
I did provide, I did provide the plan. So I, I think maybe, maybe I wasn't as specific as I probably should have been in my application. So basically, by creating two lots, the lot with the single-family would be conforming in area, because it would have eight thousand five hundred and twenty square feet, but it would be non-conforming in frontage, because it would only have fifty-six square, fifty-six feet instead of eighty. The two-family would have, would be non-conforming inasmuch as it would only have about nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-six square feet of area instead of twelve thousand. And it would have almost ninety-one square feet of frontage instead of a hundred square feet.
So, okay, so is this on the borderline in two areas?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
John?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right. Dagger, I'll go to you.
No, I'm all set.
Mr. Pine?
I'm all set.
I have a question. I think you heard earlier, a similar situation about, you know, single-family homes and conformities and lots splitting. What's he looking to do here for a single-family home?
Do you know what type of house you'd build?
Yeah, I got two kids, I would like to have a ter, uh, three, uh, three-bedroom.
A three-bedroom?
Yeah.
And then you've got a two-family here? And how many bedrooms are in that two-family? Six?
No.
Five. Five.
It's only been used like, uh, it's a, it's a five-bedroom, but we only used like four, sorry.
So it's a, so it's two floors, the existing structure's two floors?
Correct.
And how many bedrooms on each floor?
Three and two.
Three and two?
I don't have a problem with three, it's sewer.
I know it's sewer. I'll, I'll take it one step further. Would you cooperate to take the garage down to make better frontage for the, the conforming of the other lot, help conform with the other lot?
That's something that I can look at.
I'm sorry?
That's something that I can look into.
Would you be willing to do it, I guess he's asking you?
Yes.
Because I, I just, throwing another single-family home in here, especially a three-bedroom, and having an additional garage with the two-family, it'll just, it'll symmetrically help fit in the neighborhood better than having this garage within two feet of the street.
We did discuss that a little bit before tonight's meeting, we probably didn't discuss it as much as we should have, but we did discuss it, and he said that would probably be something...
I know he doesn't want to, but I think it may, may help. Okay, anybody in the audience want to be heard on this? Yes, sir?
My name is Bernardo, I live at six East Street.
I'm sorry, what, what address, sir?
Six East Street.
Okay.
I'm a corner lot to Hayward Street.
Okay.
So, I, uh, a couple of years, well, five, six years ago, maybe longer than that, um, we have a little over seventeen thousand square feet. So I went through the same process they're trying to go to, and I was told that because of the fact that I have a two-family home, and when we, they re-zoned the area down there, if I, if I tried to subdivide or build a single-family home from the corner, that my two-family home would be conforming. And plus, I don't, I don't believe I have enough frontage either on Hayward Street...
If you're on a corner, it's probably a challenge.
Right, right. So, so that's why, number one, I don't, I think I would be disadvantaged if they would have disadvantaged all of me. Second thing is, there's already a house behind me that was built before the new zoning went in, before that. They put this, uh, I think it was just, uh, over eight thousand square feet, they got this two-family, um, townhouse there. It's just split in there, just so, just so, it absolutely fits in a lot. So this is why the town years ago, or a few years ago, did, um, increase the zoning there so they wouldn't put these, uh, houses on these non-conforming lots, the two-family houses. There's another house on, uh, thirteen and fifteen Hayward Street, that was a family for years, he sold and moved out of the area. One was a two-family home, and the other lot next door was a separate lot, which I believe is fifteen East Street. So it's thirteen and fifteen East Street, right across the street. So now, um, uh, from what I understand, that was subdivided, subdivided years ago, like maybe back in nineteen fifties. So now, there's another humongous house going in on that, and it's not no more than ten feet away from each house on each side. So it's ten feet, ten to fifteen feet of space between this house on one side, and ten to fifteen feet of space to the house next door. And another thing of that was, I guess at one time, this, this, uh, the existing house was a three-family, so they brought that back to a three-family. So now you've got that, those two houses there, you've got the house behind me, that's already non-conforming, plus a couple more houses down the street that were put in before they changed the zoning down there. Two more, uh, two, one or two more, uh, townhouses that were put in on a non-conforming lot at the time. But they were conforming at the time, because they had eight thousand square feet, and they could put in whatever they wanted. So this is one reason why, um, I don't see why they should have advantage, and I won't be able to have advantage down the road if I decide to sell, because I'm seventy-one years old. So, that's why I'm here. I hope you take these comments into consideration.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anybody else want to be heard? I just have a final comment. What hardship would you have? Where is your hardship? What would you indicate your hardship is here? You've had this for many, many years. It's not allowed, but you're trying to make it allowed, so I guess, where is your hardship?
Mr. Chairman, I would say that his hardship is, is twofold. From one aspect, it is a financial hardship in the fact that he has relocated to Florida, although his, his family and his background is here. He hopes to move back to Milford at some point. If he is able to split these lots and build a single-family on this other lot, then he would have a place to be able to relocate to back in Milford, rather than moving back into a, you know, apartment in this two-family, which he already owns with his family. That's one piece of it. The second piece of it is the fact that this is a unique lot for this area. It's eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty square feet, which is uncommon. This is an RA district, most of the lots are eight thousand square feet, if not smaller. In this instance, the entire house and garage that was, was built in the nineteen hundreds, you can see that it's built all the way over to one side of the lot. His deed shows that there were two parcels at the time, so at one time, this was most likely two separate lots. And the fact that that whole other area of the one lot right now is totally vacant, the hardship is that he is unable to use an eight hundred, eighty-five hundred square foot lot. He would be, um, deprived the use of that land in order to be able to build a single-family house on that lot.
You, you're also going to be out of conformity on, on frontage setbacks from the original lot.
Yes, I, I, I did say that. I'd said the first lot would be nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-six square feet in area, and almost ninety-one square feet in frontage, as opposed to twelve thousand and a hundred.
Even your offsets, you're, you're, you're even, you're still out of conformity on offsets as well.
Well, obviously, the offsets on, on the pre-existing house, I mean, that was built in the nineteen hundreds, I mean, there's really not much he can do to change that. I mean, the new house, I mean, Mr., um...
Bernard?
...was talking about how the houses are only approximately ten feet away from each other, that's the sidelines in the RA district.
Yeah, I, I know the...
It's only ten feet.
I know the sidelines are ten feet, yeah. Any other comments? Their pleasure, the board?
You're going to close the hearing.
Oh, Dagger didn't close it?
No.
No wonder he's here. Before we close the hearing, you have your last word.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I would just like the board to consider everything that we've discussed tonight, and again, I, I believe that this is, um, this is, I'm sorry, that this, um, request is not unreasonable, and we ask that the board make a favorable...
Okay, we'll close the hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Uh, what do you, what type of motion do you want to make?
I'll make a motion that we approve a subject to three-bedroom house.
All right, so we've got a motion to approve the lot, not more than a three-bedroom home. Garage needs to come down on the existing house, as we discussed, and maybe the driveway should be replaced on that side, so it conforms much better in the neighborhood. Garage to be raised. Driveways. To left side home. So there's a motion that the applicant not build anything more than a three-bedroom, single-family home. Garage to be raised, and a, um, a driveway to be placed in that location, so it better conforms with, that is far as the, the lot, um, the visual aspects of the lot. Is there anything else someone wants to add?
Yeah, I, I think that he's showing, I know what the gentleman there has said, but I think he's showing really good faith in taking down the garage. I mean, a lot of people like to have a garage, and...
It's on the street, it's, it's so, so far on the street.
Yeah, he's willing to just take it down, I think he's showing some good faith there in trying to make this doable for everyone.
Any other comments? We have a motion, a second by John, all those in favor? Aye. That's your unanimous.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Uh, we'll have the decision with the language in there, if you have any questions, just comment.
No problem, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll write that after the next hearing, because we're running a little late. Okay. Is there one more after this? Yes, there is.
It's in my waist, Suzette.
All right, I, I will moderate this, but on this hearing would be David, John, Bobby Cap, Charlie, and John. Okay, this is on the application of Makepar Corporation, two thirty-six South Main Street Hope Deal, for special permit, uh, pursuit in section three point one point three of the other applicable provisions of the zoning bylaw, in relation to a possible, parcel of land containing approximately eleven thousand eight hundred and forty-five square foot, more or less on the southerly side of South Main Street, known and numbered as eighty-nine, eighty-seven South Main, which parcel is owned by Miso Inc. The relief sought to permit the continuation of an automobile services on the subject parcel, together with motor vehicle sales. There's a lengthy, um, aspect, I have a motion to dispense with the reading, as long as it's...
Yeah, let's dispense it to the reading.
Dispense with the reading, as long as it's, it's, it's the same as indicated in writing, is it it?
It is.
Okay, therefore, we suspend, uh, the reading. This did come in front of the planning board on September fifth. They voted unfavorable, see town plan or letter. Paraphrasing, paraphrasing, the, the applicant requests a ZB special permit to, uh, for sale of used motor vehicles on the subject property. The existing use is a longstanding non-conforming auto repair shop in the IRA residential zone. ZBL section three point one point three deals with the possible extension of non-conformities in the general, while a ZBL, uh, section, um, three point one zero specifically relates to unregistered vehicles. Section three point one zero two provides a ZBA special permit approval for the outdoor placement of unregistered vehicles. But the addition of used vehicle sales to the subject property constitutes, um, the addition of a separate use that is prohibited in the IRA district, and that would allow, also require a class two dealer's license from the Board of Selectmen. The auto repair business will generate the same amount of traffic whether or not the vehicles being repaired are registered. However, to add the separate use of the auto sales to the site, that has been a long problematic, due to the site upkeep and over-intensification of use is ill as void, therefore, Larry Duncan did follow it over in a favorable. With that, Attorney Pettenari, you have the floor.
Thank you, gentlemen. Kelly, I am Ernie Pettenari. For the last time, I'm going to tell you that my office is located at twelve Main Street in Milford. I'm here tonight to, on behalf of Mark Rizzoli, who's with me, who's the president and treasurer of Makepar Corporation. Mark's a person that's familiar, I think, to most of you. I was not able to go to last week's planning board, I was a little bit under the weather, as my face seems to show. But one of the things that I... ...was the, the, part of the reason why the planning board was concerned about the issuance of the permit was because there's a long and storied history to the lot. Those of us in the room old enough to remember, and there's probably just a handful, can tell you that that property was the site of automobile sales and service before I was born. I'm looking at Charlie, because I think Charlie remembers, maybe before you were born. The, the enforcement questions that were pertinent to particular owners of the property have not been appropriately the, the focus of any enforcement actions, either against my client, or even against the site for many, many years. We're here tonight to tell you that, first of all, the former owner, Miso Incorporated, is no longer the owner, that Makepar and Mark have purchased the property at the end of August, that since he purchased it, he's already gone into the property and, and cleaned it and refurbished it, and done a lot of landscaping work, et cetera. And like anything that Mark has been involved in, his intention is to make this property into a showplace and to run it appropriately, so that the neighborhood and the town would be obviously proud to have them there. The fact that it is a long, pre-existing legal non-conforming use, it has been uninterruptedly automobile sales and service for more than fifty years. It has been sporadically automobile sales and service for an equivalent amount of time. Most recently, there was no sales. Mark seeks presently to ask the Board of Selectmen for six, a, a class two license to authorize the offering for sale of six vehicles on the site. The fact that they're registered or unregistered, once there's a class two license, I would submit respectfully to the planner, is an irrelevancy. The maintenance of the property is something that we know we have to do, and we have to do it in an exemplary fashion, and I would submit, with all due respect to, to the planner, that Mark's record and Makepar's record in that regard is one that is exceptional in the town of Milford. We have, as a matter of right, the ability to go in and run a garage there. We can do auto repairs, and that's primarily what the function of this property will be for Makepar. They will use the facility to repair the vehicles that they offer for sale at other locations, and it would be a nice adjunct to the use of the property if we could offer for sale some cars that happened to be on the site at the time. Obviously, we've been before you before, and the argument is fairly circular. If the cars that are on the lot are for sale, it's good for business. And having an owner like Makepar come into that neighborhood and buy that property and do what he intends to do there, I would respectfully say is also good for the community. That's basically the presentation, and that's the presentation I would have made to the planning board that evening, but for my inability to attend. So with that, I would respectfully say we're here to answer any questions you might have, and I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great, thank you. John, I'll start on this end of the table with you.
Uh, no questions at this time.
Okay, if you have any questions?
I'm all set.
Okay. Bernardo, Charlie?
This is the, this property has come up here before with some issues, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and people complaining and so forth.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and frankly, it was the, I, this is anecdotal, I do not know, I was not involved in the presentation. I was told when I came to the town hall to do some research about it. I was told by town council that there had been a prior application for a class two license for thirty cars on the site. It doesn't work for thirty cars, I'm here to tell you, but Mark knows that... But Mark knows that, I know that, we're here to talk about six.
Okay. John?
I have no questions.
Bob, anything there? Anybody in the audience? There isn't many people here.
You drove them away.
Okay, uh, with that, do you-
Again, I'm, I'm, I'm here in, in, in all sincerity, I, I, I do believe that when someone comes into a neighborhood and intends to do the kind of things that, that Mark and Makepar can do there, it's something that the community should reward by giving him, as Charlie said earlier in the evening, um, a vote of confidence. And I think that that's what we're here asking you to do. Obviously, this is still subject to the Board of Selectmen issuing a class-two license for the operation there, and upon favorable action of this board, our next stop will be there.
Okay, great. With that, we'll, uh, close the hearing. Uh, are you still on Main Street?
I, as a matter of fact, I am, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm still-
Packing your boxes?
I'm still locate, I'm, I'm still located on Main Street, I'm packing boxes as we speak, I've got-
I wasn't sure, because it looked like someone ripped the sign, ripped the name right off the sign over there.
That wasn't my name, my name's still there. I'm gonna stick around till the ship goes down.
I didn't know, the van, the place looked like it was getting vandalized, I saw the name ripped off.
I hope not, please, not at this late hour.
Okay, with that, is there a motion?
A motion to approve it.
A motion to approve, um, uh, by David, uh, as submitted.
Second.
Uh, second by Bob, all those in favor? I oppose, that's unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'd like to thank the board, thank you. Good luck.
Good luck, Mark.
Thank you.
Do a great job.
I've had a lot of fun with you guys over the years, thank you very much.
Yeah, well, hopefully you're not coming back again.
I probably won't.
Uh, you will.
I will see.
I hope you enjoy your lake or your ocean. We're all wishing we were up there.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, enjoy, congratulations.
Did he just invite us all up there?
Yeah.
I heard him.
You go up tomorrow morning, there won't be anybody there, but the afternoon maybe. Thanks, guys.
See you later, take care. Um, we have, I think, one more hearing? Okay, this is on the application of, uh, Beth Bento.
I don't know.
Come on in, okay. Here's my agenda and things. I don't need that.
Okay, I just need help.
Okay, yeah. On the application of, uh, Beth Bento of twenty Purchase Street, uh, for the variance relief from provisions of section two point four and two point five of the zoning bylaw in relation to a parcel of land located on Purchase Street. Known and numbered as Twenty Purchase, owned by the petition of the variance relief, is sought in order to permit the construction of a deck to the rear of the existing structure of the property closer to the lotland, lotline that is otherwise permitted. Uh, we do have the application, indicates that, uh, I want to go into the corner of the house with a proposed deck. Uh, really can't make it out, she'll have to explain to us what you're trying to do from that back section. Uh, she wants to be able to have better outdoor space and some area for kitchen, would be smaller. Uh, the, um, the deck in the backyard, so it basically, it looks to me like she wants a little bit more space to make everything more useful to her. There's a plan in here with the deck, sixteen by twelve. We do have a plan here as well, does everybody see the plan?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, by the way, um, John, you will not be on this hearing, as Bobby will be in. And let's do this. Give us an idea of what you're trying to do as soon as I read the planning board's comment. They did review this on the September fifth, and they voted favorable as long as it does not infringe on a side yard setback of five point two feet on the side property line, and maintain that with the construction of the new deck. Saying that, the, the town planner indicated the applicant was requesting a twelve-by-sixteen foot deck off the rear of the existing single-family dwelling on the property. The property's non-conforming lot as to area width and frontage, the dwelling is non-conforming as to the side setback. The proposed deck will be extended, um, um, by the side on the north building line, however, the building is not parallel to the side property line, which results in further slight encroachments into the side, required side yard. The rear corner of the house is currently five point two feet from the side property line. The proposed deck will be four point seven feet from the side property line at the rear corner, ten feet required. Therefore, he recommended a favorable report be sent off to the planning board. So saying that, why don't you give us an idea of what you're trying to do?
Um, I'm sorry if you guys don't understand my English, I didn't know it was gonna be like this, I really didn't know. I'm gonna try to explain as much as I can, if you guys don't understand, I try and repeat. Um, the reason tonight here, just, uh, I want to do a deck in my backyard, my, my house is not that big, and the kitchen and the living room, it's really small. So we decided to make a deck to make, you know, the living room, we could have put a sliding door in there, so the, the dining room will be, if it, one table with the four chairs, because with the door, when you open, you can't even use the table. So when we tried to ask to do the deck, and now they real- realize the line, they asked for ten, ten feet from the-
Ten side, ten-foot side lots.
Yeah, the, we didn't know about that, so to do that, that way, we can't put a sliding door, is no, you can't make the deck. So that's why, we, if you ask to, can't do the sides, you know, the house like this, you can go forward. I think it's a five, I'm sorry, the numbers, I don't remember the numbers. If I can really do like the twelve like this and sixteen like that, I could be able to put the sliding door, because if they take a ten, well, the door is gonna be too small, and I'll bump, be able to use my, my dining room.
I think what the planning board was talking about, um, based on some of the notes and what I'm understanding, the, the planning board wants you to keep the five point two feet from the side lotline to the deck. You have five point two feet, and then it goes down to four point seven feet. I think the planning board wants you to keep the five point two feet from this side, and make sure it's five point two feet from the line this side as well.
Can I go down to what?
Okay.
Just for, just for the record, I'm okay with the way she's asking for it, I don't really care what the planning board wants.
I, I just want to explain what the planner was trying to do. From the property line to the building is five point two.
Five inches.
Five point two feet to the deck.
Uh-huh.
Okay? Then you go down twelve feet, and this you end up at four point seven feet. The planning board in their letter is indicating they want you to keep five point two feet, which basically means that you'd be going like this with the deck.
Great.
But I, based on what I'm hearing, I think you just may be fine.
But if I get this, I won't be able to put the sliding door in here.
We, we, we understand, we get it.
Yeah, okay, you're okay.
So I'll, I'll do that?
Go have a, go have a seat, we'll, we'll take it. Have a seat.
Yeah.
After he said he gonna hug you.
Better not, he better not come near me.
If I hug you, I, I won't hug you too hard, I don't want to hurt your shoulder.
Okay, um, I, I think we, I think all members, you guys all got the plan, right?
Yeah.
You all know what we're talking about? You got it, man?
So I'll be able to do the deck and-
So, let me, let me say this. You have the last word before we make the decision, so that you can try and move forward. You have anything else to say?
Oh, just please let me do, do my, I can put the sliding door, and I can follow the way, you know, I can make the deck-
So you can fit what you want.
I don't want the deck go like this, it's gonna look horrible if you go one side like this. So the, the deck should be straight, that's what, if I'm saying that right.
Yeah.
So, and, uh, I put twelve by twelve, uh, the numbers, you can change, you can do like sixteen and sixteen, or, you know, I put twelve, like, you know, because in the, it's a backyard, I'm not, to tell you the truth, it's a, um, grass on one side and grass outside, I'm not bothering anybody, just-
You have any chickens?
No. Down in Brazil.
I'll make sure.
Down in Brazil.
Okay.
Not here.
All right.
No chicken, no, no, no.
Okay, um, I think we could close the hearing and, and take it under advisement. Why don't we go right to, uh, do I have a motion? Does someone want to make a motion?